Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome me to our city council meeting tonight. Today is Wednesday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Tonight's invocation will be given by Associate Pastor Esteban Mendez of all Kingsburg First Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Lord, we just come and we thank you for everything you've put in place. And we just asked blessings over our city, blessings over our council members and the leadership. We just pray for our city that you continue to lead us and help us prosper. You watch over each of the fire departments and police departments and everyone that stewards our city so well. And we just ask that we point everything towards you and we do all this to your glory and your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, thank you, Esteban. I'd like to call this meeting to order tonight. Abby, could you please take real call?
Here.
Here. Next, we need to approve the agenda. Action by council to approve the agenda or to make modifications. Items that can be added to the agenda is constrained by state law. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Motion approved.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay. Agenda is approved. Next on the agenda, we have presentations. Tonight, we have none. We'll move on to public comment. This is time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within his jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Do we have anybody here tonight that would like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none. I will close public comment. Next, we have consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of consent calendar items include resoda reading ordinances by titles, only an adoption of recommended actions contained in staff reports. Tonight, we have five point one through five point eleven. Does any council member wish to pull a consent calendar item? No? Anybody from the public like to pull a consent calendar item? Nope, seeing none? Okay. Then can I get a motion to approve consent calendar, please? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Moving on. Regular calendar, six point one. San Joaquin Valley Regional Blueprint Award, Kingsburg Downtown Revitalization. Staff report prepared by Community Development Director Holly Owen. Presentation by Community Director Holly Owen.
Good evening, Mayor Palamari Council. Just wanted to say a few words about this award and to supplement what is already in your staff report. You have a staff report that you've perhaps glad stat and might have know the gist of what, why this award was given to us. First of all, it's a culmination of individuals working collaboratively over time, both the city councils over the years as well as city staff, especially the city manager, who communicates with all of you to make sure you make informed decisions. I also want to call out the willingness of councils over time to make tougher decisions as well as to provide incentives to realize certain outcomes in the revitalization process. In my experience, that's unique for small town electeds and what makes Kingsburg unique also. It's very easy to have dynamics from the diocese evolve into squabbling or grandstanding and losing sight of the importance of all rowing together to accomplish long-term goals. Thanks to all of you for your support and your thoughtful consideration of the actions that you take. My role here in the city is to take direction from you all. It's a big responsibility, but also a privilege to work towards these common goals. And I look forward to seeing the outcome of the upcoming strategic visioning process. We have a great downtown. I'm very proud of it. We got some good advice early on and everybody has followed it. So, thank you. Tonight, we also have the focus of the project that was picked as part of the downtown revitalization process. Mr. Yanez is here to speak a little bit to his project. And Alex, did you want to say anything at that point?
Sure. As Holly mentioned, in the staff report, I think just to give a little bit of background, obviously, we had the community planners come in in two thousand and seventeen and that report is included in your packet and there were a number of recommendations at that time. I think it's interesting to look back now, six years later, and see how many of those recommendations have actually been implemented. So, you know, what happens a lot with communities is that they do a lot of planning and then that document gets put on a shelf and, you know, never gets touched again. So, as Holly mentioned, you know, a lot of support from councils, you know, past and present. You know, one of the things that was very evident in that report was the identification of some catalytic sites. One of those sites was, is where, was vacant for thirty years. It's where Casaros and Roadhouse is right now. That took some significant effort on the, on the council's behalf to apply some downward pressure. And so, you know, that worked out well in the long run and now we have two, you know, thriving restaurants in there and another addition to our downtown. One of the other catalytic sites in the downtown was the former Hotel Stone, which obviously we lost in a fire in late two thousand and sixteen. And so, you know, what often happens is there's sort of angst after buildings like that are lost to just try and get something back, something, anything. And so, I think what you're seeing there now with Stone Plaza is the outcome of patience and thoughtful planning where we'll have both, you know, mixed use with residential on the top and three commercial spaces on their own floor. And, you know, as you can sort of see, I know that there's, I know Efrain is hopeful to unveil it soon, but you can start to see what the outside is starting to come to and, you know, obviously, he's done a good job there. So, Efrain, if you wouldn't mind coming up as well and maybe just giving some updates on timelines as the project is going and anything else that you would like to share, we'd appreciate it.
Hi. Hi, everyone. My name is Efrain Yanez. You already know me for a few years. And so far, project's going very well. We anticipating to finish everything in the next, I would say, five months, but it'll be less, just to give myself a little more time. We have the deadline October, I believe. That'll be before that. The apartment's gonna be ready. We are installing doors tomorrow. All that three spaces being rented in the baron. Toshicos from Hemphyr, they're gonna move in, a Japanese restaurant. The Chicos, they're relocating their business from Seymour, right next to Seymour, to downtown. They're all gonna have bars. We are designing everything in the inside, top of the line hoods, everything that they need for being, to be successful in their business. I wanted to thank everyone, especially Alex. He has done tremendous job with everything, helping me, helping everyone, the council and everyone. Jolene, I mean, I can name them. I mean, just in case I miss everyone, but, I mean, just the support from you guys has been welcome on our side. Any questions that you guys have?
Question, council? No, I have one question. Did you say there was gonna be one restaurants or two?
Two restaurants.
Two, okay.
Yeah.
You said one's Japanese and then the Chicos.
Yeah. That's right. Yeah, that's a good one. Everybody gets confused with that.
Toshico, okay, that's what it's called?
Yeah.
Well, that'll be good, okay.
Yeah. They give me four beers. They wanna carry their own beers. Delicious. Really good.
No other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Efrain.
Thank you for all the support.
You're welcome.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I do just want to echo Efrain's comments about Jolene Poliak and her contribution to this. I know she's worked very hard on it and has been in constant communication with Efrain and she helped connect the Chicos and they really are looking for more space and so they're gonna get that. I know that, I think Efrain is planning to design sort of a, an event room, a community space for rentals. And I know that that's something that the Chicos has been looking for for a while. So, we're happy that they're going to expand and invest in the downtown as well. So.
Any comments on this agenda item from the public? I'm sure you're all looking forward to some Japanese food and Italian food out, you know, right here, right here closer to Craper Street. That'd be nice, yeah. Okay, any more council discussion on this item? Any discussion at all? Okay, then. Actually, the necessary is, well, real quick, here's the award that was given. It's a really nice award. Says San Joaquin Valley Blueprint on top. It's got the California, logo of California, the state of California. It says, "Twenty twenty-three Blueprint, Award of Excellence Downtown Revitalization, Stone Plaza Project, City of Kingsburg." So, it's a really nice award. Action. Thank you, Brandon. Action deemed necessary is accept the award for downtown revitalization, twenty twenty-three, San Joaquin Valley Regional Blueprint Award. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved, yes.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, motion carries. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes. Congratulations, Holly, for all your hard work and everybody's hard work to, for us to get, Kingford to get this award.
It was, really, the thing I did was apply for the, for this grant way back in two thousand and sixteen. And the rest has all been you. So, thanks to you.
Okay, thank you again. Move on to six point two. One percent public safety sales tax. Measure E overview sponsored by Police and Fire Department. Presentation by City Manager Alex Henderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before we have the chiefs come up and give their presentations, just wanted to give a brief overview of the one percent tax and of the fund itself. So, just a reminder that Measure E was a one percent public safety sales tax that was approved by seventy-two percent of voters during the June fifth, two thousand and eighteen primary election. Measure E is considered a transaction and use tax, which are allocated to the jurisdiction where the tax product is received or registered, which is a case of a motor vehicle purchase. Because of this, Measure E one percent revenue collections are higher than the one percent local jurisdiction place of sale or use. So, for example, if a consumer purchases a new motor vehicle and registers it in Kingsburg, which is the place of residence, the city receives the one percent tax for that vehicle for the purposes of Measure E. The same theory applies with destination-based purchases, which is especially relevant for online activity, which saw a sharp increase during the pandemic and obviously just consumer trends overall. In your staff report, I've included essentially some updates since, that goes year by year on the fund and sort of its success. I'm just gonna focus on the year that we're in and projections for next year. So, for fiscal year twenty-three, we are projecting a slight decline of point two percent and those, that is based upon figures provided by Avenue Insights, our sales tax consultant. It should be noted, however, that our current collections, which are from July of two thousand and twenty-two through February of two thousand and twenty-three, which is the most up-to-date that we have, is currently five point five seven percent higher when compared to the same time period from the previous year. So, if those trends continue, then obviously, you know, that would be a positive and it will outpace what occurred last year, but they are predicting some slight downturn over the next few months. Now, for fiscal year twenty-four, we're budgeting a four point four percent increase from what they're predicting this year for sales tax collections alone, which also again is being provided by our sales tax consultant. You will see that there are some other numbers in there, transfers in there on the revenue line. For this year, there's a portion, fifty thousand dollars. That's an anticipated reimbursement from some of our participation in the wildland fires. So, some of the individuals in the fire department that are coded to Measure E participated in those fires and so the expenditure came out of Measure E and so they'll be reimbursed. Sixty thousand dollars for next year. There is the purchase of three new police patrol vehicles. And we, the police department received grants of twenty thousand dollars each for, from the air pollution control district. So, those will also reimburse the Measure E fund. If you just scroll down a little bit, Abby, to the, sort of the fund balance summary, a couple more pages. So, we do have spreadsheets in here that show the individual line item of expenditures. That is the production over the next several years with regards to sales tax collections. And then our, what we have collected so far. Is it further up? Sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, it was at the top. My apologies. There you go. So, again, you'll see here, this is a summary format of expenditures, both from police and fire. And then at the very bottom there, you'll see sort of a rolling fund balance amount at the end of June thirtieth. So, you will see both this year and next year, we are, it's planned expenditures exceeding revenues and the purpose, the reason for that is, is because we had some years where we had collections far outpace our expenditures, based mostly because of conservative budgeting. So, obviously, the first few years of Measure E, we were sort of getting a handle on what those sales tax receipts would be. And then in the middle of, about the second year, the pandemic hit and so we did not add a lot of bodies at that time because we were unsure of what the outcome would be. And so, we built that fund balance up pretty high and so we started to spend that down. But from a structural standpoint, you know, expenditure, excuse me, revenues will outpace expenditures in the future. And we, both the chiefs and I've had long conversations about that, about making sure that the fund is sustainable in the future. So, I just wanted to clarify that item. But if there are no questions about the fund itself right now, I will invite Chief Perkins to come up to give his report. And just note that we gave a similar report as required as part of the approval to our Measure E Oversight Committee. That's a citizens committee that is required to make sure that the funds are only spent on public safety items and they did accept the budget and at their meeting on Monday. So, that concludes my report.
Any questions from council on the funds?
I had one, excuse me, one quick question. Alex, the projected downturn in the revenue portion, did they give you any type of indication as to why that would be? Was it inflation-driven or what?
Yeah, so they, they work with UCLA and their economics department and I think it's just based upon potential trends. Yeah, so some, some of it is inflation, some of it, you know, potential recession things, which, you know, kind of been hearing about for a year or so now. And so, they update them every quarter. And so, I'm anticipating that we'll, we'll get some, some new information soon, but, you know, part of it might just be, you know, their, you know, conservative projections as well.
Wasn't anything specific to the community?
No.
More, yeah.
Yeah, we just, yeah, consumer trends overall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Nope, okay. Chief, Chief Perkins first, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and everyone present. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the measuring spending plan, what we spent, what we did with it, how it's impacted the community and what we plan to do with the next things that we're going to do. Okay. Yes, and that's who I am. Surprise. Again, we always preface everything with a mission, vision, values, making sure that we're always thinking about that when we're making these decisions. Do they match the mission, vision, values that we've established for the organization? Specifically, we're gonna talk about the personnel in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, who we had, what we did with that, that group of folks, what they were able to accomplish, our projects that were happened, that did happen in twenty-two, twenty-three, and what the impacts were to the community. I think that's really specific and worth noting. Measure E proposed expenditures for twenty-three, twenty-four and then what our multi-year strategic allocation plan update. What we're going to do long-term. What is our long-term planning with this? As with all things, we want to make sure that we're incorporating with that. So, what specifically did we do? There we go. With personnel. We maintained four full-time fire department positions. Three captains, one fire department administrative assistant to the fire chief, Herlinda Hernandez, who's been essential in all these activities. Fifty percent of an account clerk. Seventeen percent of an accountant and one part-time fire office help is what was paid out of Measure E to assist us in accomplishing the things that we'll talk about here in just a minute. So, two part-time and two partial positions to assist. Those will become, we'll shed some light on those specific positions and what those folks did. Those two positions were part of our community risk reduction and in the support personnel item. So, we basically took full-time people, their overtime that was spent, brought back to do community risk reduction. So, fire prevention, community outreach, all those specific things. Led to some really surprising outcomes, long-term, and they were really impactful to the community. We added one part-time geographic information assistant. We also used two permanent staff members that completed four hundred and fifty fire life safety inspections and mapped some of these six hundred and sixty-four hydrates that we have in the fire department for the community. And you might think, well, what does that have to do with anything? A lot. And that's what we're gonna talk about. What did it actually do? So, for ISO, Insurance Service Office, we were at a three, which in the whole scheme of things, about fourteen to eighteen percent of the fire departments are at a three in the United States. Most are far beyond that. So, they're not a, they don't have a really good rating. Their insurance rates are up because they can't provide the fire protection due to many different factors. We started at a three and in this process, we went from a three to a two. We almost, we were one point seven points away from a one, which is unheard of in a department our size. We did this as a direct result of the folks that did that work to maintain those fire hydrates, go back and do those inspections, map them all out with the GIS folks. That combination really allowed us to have that, which is a big cost savings to the folks here in the community. Equates to about a seven percent decrease in insurance rates. And again, only seven hundred and forty-nine US departments are rated a two. That puts us in the top two percent of fire departments in the United States. Other community impacts, the second full-time ambulance. We were missing in our nine-three-six-three-one about six hundred and fourteen calls at the beginning of two thousand and twenty. Missing by, it's not that we didn't want to go to them, we didn't have any units available to go to them. When we added the second ambulance, took time for us to amass the statistics. About a year later, we started seeing that positive change. And at the end of this, currently, we're only missing ninety-three. It's a five hundred and sixty percent decrease in missed calls due to the second ambulance. So, again, that's part of Measure E is helping that process. Without it, we would be definitely, definitely a different department. We've also decreased cardiac arrest deaths. Yes?
Sorry to interrupt. Can I ask a clarifying question on that? The ones that were missing before and currently, that's not just Kingsburg, those are the surrounding areas.
No, that's nine-three-six-three-one zip code. Yeah, just in the nine-three-six-three-one zip code. So, anyone that considers themselves, and it's an immediate, the outlying area. So, there are some areas that are just outside of the city limits. So, we don't have any defining ways to cull that data by street. We don't, we couldn't just do city border. Well, we, we could, but it makes it a little different statistic. It's a little, little more clear when we do it this way. Our cardiac arrest saves are up by fifty percent, which is amazing. It's, it's a direct impact but from Measure E. The training we've been able to do, the personnel we've added. It has also increased our ambulance revenue by thirty-six percent. So, again, that's impactful in a lot of different ways. It helps other agencies or other entities within the city to not feel the weight of a growing fire department where becoming more self-sufficient. It also has increased our unit reliability. That unit reliability is a function of how many units are available to run that second or third call when those calls come in. Because typically, we'll have one call that'll happen and we'll get another call on top of it and then yet another one. It's that second and third call that we've really had an impact on. We went from fifty-four percent reliable to seventy-nine percent in a period of eighteen months. So, that's a huge impact. Now, what did we spend the money on? Specifically, we maintained our part-time folks that were already in the queue and many of them became full-time employees. That allowed us to do a number of different things. Again, we grabbed those, grabbed the interns from the colleges, have our homegrown folks that like to stay here for the culture and then enjoy being part of our team. So, they stay and want to become full-time employees. So, it really became a very productive way to capture people. And as we know, some of the difficulties both police and fire are experiencing, we don't have people knocking on the doors that want to become servants of the community. It's very difficult to do that right now. The other things that we did specifically, radios, we updated six-unit radios and three of the response units. You kind of see the pictures of the radio, the mobile data terminals on the right. Replaced six handheld dual-band radios to increase interoperability for a cost of thirty-five thousand dollars. We did PPE. This is the, when I say PPE, all of the stuff that you see firefighter engineer Darius Rodriguez wearing right here is his PPE, personal protective equipment. We purchased twelve sets of those and it allowed us to get a second set for our firefighters, which is a huge element of a health and wellness program to get them out of that cancer-causing material and get that off of their body as soon as we can to get that laundered and get them in a clean set of gear. That cost us forty thousand dollars that year. The same twelve sets now is now sixty-five thousand dollars. Prices have gone through the roof. It's ridiculous. We replaced a staff vehicle. This is gonna become the safety officer's vehicle essentially. Eighty thousand dollars was the total price tag. It doesn't look like this now. It's actually got, it's all striping. It's gonna get its end of total build-out items on it, all the radios and sirens and all the other things. Fire hose typically, and just like you can see over here on the right, that's the dates, that bottom number, that four ninety-eight was when that was tested last, prior to me coming here. And they're only good for ten years. So, well outside of its service life. We replaced four thousand feet at a cost of forty thousand dollars. So, again, those prices have also escalated. Turnout extractor and dryer, these were installed at station one, as well as the commercial ice maker was installed at station two. This helps complement these health and wellness items that have really become instrumental in decreasing any type of on-the-job injury or illness that we have from people being exposed to heat illness, as well as cleaning those turnouts that we talked about, getting, getting that cancer a little down. This equated to about forty-five thousand dollars. We replaced the floor drains and this is kind of the outcome of replacing the floor drains and then putting a different coating, a non-slip coating on that. So, we decreased slip-trip fall hazards, but from not only the community, but also our employees. And we put our symbol on this as we've done with many other things. That cost us fifteen thousand dollars. And we also epoxy-coated, got rid of all the carpets in the main areas within the stations. So, it's easier for us to clean and maintain, especially after our bouts with COVID. We found this to be very effective at decreasing our COVID experience. And that was thirty thousand dollars, a total of forty-five thousand dollars on that one. We did an extensive number of hours of training. Safety officer, company officer, these on the right are the total hours per person that it took to get that. So, if you looked at company officer, three, it's three times a hundred and forty hours. So, an extensive number of hours of training, which on the back end, we also received through our agreements with the college, additional funding to offset those training costs. So, it's been very productive for us. Rescue tracks, fire marshal, CICCS overhead, that's the Anna County mutual aid items, for a total of nine thousand dollars. Now, what are we gonna spend the money on this year? Personnel, four hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars is the exact price tag. Three captains, one. Three captains, one full-time assistant to the fire chief, two part-time, two partial positions. And really, this speaks to the impact of our growth on the rest of the city leadership team. We really had a, I wouldn't say a negative impact, but we really started to see a lot of people have to wear a tremendous number of hats. So I think the expenditure of us sharing that with the, um, public safety, uh, police department end, especially with the account clerk, the accountant, and then the office help has been instrumental in making this a success. Training, thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. All of these courses here are what we're going to be offering over this next year. Especially the rescue tracks, uh, trench, confined space, river, and flood. Uh, these are all things that are very specific to a very unique aspect we have with our firefighter paramedics, since we're now, uh, part of the regional task force for urban search and rescue, which is kind of a prestigious group of people in the fire service world. Also, single units, single unit resource incident management team training. Now we start talking about the fire department strategic plan. Now, I want to talk about this a little bit, because it says fifty percent is paid by Measure E. This is a guiding document at the end. It's done in three stages. The three stages are community risk assessment, the first one, so that has to be done. Then we get another stage, which is the standard of cover, which comes from that. Where should we put fire stations? How many people should we have on duty? We're getting all of the pros from Dover to tell us what we're doing is accurate, or maybe we need to adjust. The final outcome is the strategic plan. So these are three documents built on top of each other. Unlike the city document that you'd see for a much lower price tag, we're getting three documents all built in there that will be long-term guiding documents for ten to fifteen years for the department. So they become very instrumental in our growth and the guidance. Communications, we're still working on communications upgrades, continuation of the five-year upgrade for the infrastructure. SCBA, seventy-five thousand dollars. This is a picture of what's called a rapid intervention crew pack. These individual packs here cost ten thousand dollars, which is an amazing price tag for something. But in the heat of the moment, when we have to go in and rescue another firefighter, we have to have a duplicate to duplicative, um, ability to have two people on an air pack at once, which is a very complex piece of equipment in the middle of it. So needless to say, these are definitely needed. We only have one of them, but we need three. So we're asking for two of those. We're also going to put some infrastructure investment in our folks, so we can do the flow testing and everything on our own. We don't have to rely on outside sources to do the work that we should be able to do and get that feedback about how we're treating our equipment. PPE testing, we have a brand-new requirement for the national, from the National Fire Protection Association that's saying that we need to actually test the liners and the actual shell together with a very specific testing process. That testing process is going to cost us twenty-five thousand dollars. This again assures that the equipment that you've so graciously allowed us to give the employees is actually protecting them. So it's another checkbox for the health and wellness piece. And again, I think it's one of those things that really speaks to our ability to care about our employees. Facilities repairs, um, talk about these facility repairs, four overhead door openers and cable systems. These twelve-hundred-and-fifty-pound doors have to be pulled up by not your normal garage door opener. That garage door opener weighs two-hundred-and-fifty pounds. It has a three-horsepower mo, three-horsepower motor on it. So that's an extensive cost, as well as replacing, uh, air conditioners at station one and station two for that total price tag. And finally, this multi-year strategic allocation plan, year one had already been set aside last year for a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. This is for apparatus replacement for our next fire engine. We're also setting aside another a hundred thousand dollars in this budget year for an expected arrival date of next budget year, so that we can offset that huge cost that we usually had in, in previous years, which impacted the police department. So now we're able to push this out over multiple years and continuation of our communications upgrades over a period of these years. That's the end of my presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to, uh, address them.
Questions from council?
I have a question. Chief, thank you for the presentation. It's very good, and I think that Measure E is, um, based on this presentation, has shown to be a very valuable tool in, in what you do in both the fire and the police, and so, um, thank you for putting this together. But my question would be probably more pertaining to the strategic plan and specifically Firehouse Two and District One. So, um, you know, my vision would be to have staffing there, and I know that, um, you have trainings and the facility's been updated, you've spent a lot of money. Do you foresee in that strategic plan at some time, um, calling for staffing at, at, uh, the Bethel Fire Station, number two?
Absolutely. I think one of the things, um, in those two documents, the community risk assessment basically goes through a process to elucidate all of the major items that our community may not know about. It tells us basically what we don't know. And it basically aligns what we don't know to, this is what we think might help you to offset those dangers. So we do know that that's the first document that happens. Then we get a standard of cover, which then drills into where should a fire station be to offset these specific areas of known hazards? How should we diversify our, our crews? Since we already have those stations identified, that standard of cover document will ninety-nine-point-nine percent assuredly say that that is the better idea to have one on the opposite side of the railroad tracks, on the opposite side of the freeway, as those are the two largest hazards that might impact our community in a very negative way. Uh, as far as the staffing, that comes in time, again, with our ambulance funding. As we build the ambulance funding, we're able to support that. And I think, just as, uh, the city manager has pointed out, we want to be conservative in our budget estimating and our spending. To do that, we have a very vetted process that we're trying to go through to ensure that we're not just having one-time monies and we're looking at that saying, oh, we'll, we'll staff it now, but we won't be able to pay for it long-term. That's that kind of a deal with the devil, with grant monies and doing that. We want to make sure that the ambulance is actually making exactly what we said it is or outperforming what it is. And right now, the projections are that that would happen. But I don't want to overstep that and give us false hope that that would happen within this next budget year. After that, I think it's possible and most likely very probable in the coming years.
Thank you.
You have a question from council? I just have a question, chief, uh, on the extractor and dryer. That's to, uh, decontaminate? Is that what that's for?
Yes, so the, the products of combustion that get into the fabrics, can't put them in a regular washer because it doesn't spin fast enough. Plus, a set of firefighter turnouts, when they're wet, weigh about ninety-three pounds, if I remember right, without the liners. With the liners, they weigh well over a hundred-and-twenty pounds. So a hundred-and-twenty-pound load spinning in a regular washer would blow it up in a matter of weeks. So these, these things spin at four times the speed of a normal washer, and when they pull it out, it actually extracts the chemical from that by shooting pressurized hot water in it at a timed cycle. So it cleans it over time and does so without agitating it. It's more of a spin process than an agitation. So that's why they're different than a regular washer.
Do you have other nearby fire departments, you know, wanting to use that here in Kingsburg?
Absolutely. Uh, matter of fact, we, we lend our services to, to our sister department, Leyton, who's a completely volunteer fire department. They've been a recipient of a number of things from us. They, they serve that community wholly voluntarily. Uh, they don't have a funding source. It's really kind of tragic for their community. But I think, again, that's part of guidance from their city government. We've, we've been blessed with what we have, and I think sharing that. So those folks come here, they, they take part in filling their SCBA bottles with our equipment, as well as using the extractor.
Thank you. Uh, one more question. You said it was costing you twenty-five thousand for, uh, some certain kind of testing, uh, NF, what was that?
NFPA eighteen fifty-one.
Is that, is that from Sacramento? Where's, where's that testing, uh, required testing come from?
So it's a national standard that we all subscribe to in the fire service. Um, it's a consensus standard, so it doesn't become law, but it has a lot more legal impact and implication when you don't follow industry standards, and we say, well, we don't have the money to do that. If we find, if we have an ability, we have that, that, I guess, motivation to do the right thing with it. That's what we should do, and I think that's one of the things we're really trying to do is do that right thing before it becomes an issue. Find those things in the gear, so we're not giving firefighters a, a piece of gear that may have holes in it or be destroyed in some way that we can't tell.
Yeah, that probably helps keep you out of number two during that testing.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, chief.
Perfect, thank you.
Chief Dayton, you're up next.
Oh, goodness.
That was a good one.
What was the time?
Start the clock, chief. Good evening. So, um, for the benefit of Councilmember Silva and, uh, new to the council and Councilmember Smith newly returned, uh, I just want to kind of preface everything with, um, since you haven't had benefit of the last few years of presentations, just general philosophy. So early on, uh, I decided to spend dollars on needed equipment, and that's where we put the bulk of the money, buying those things that we needed to get ourselves to the level of professionalism that we needed here in, uh, this city. The latter part of these last few years has all been focused on personnel, since we're pretty well-equipped. I mean, we're actually very well-equipped. So with that premise, let me run into what we have going here with, um, this current year. So current year, a capital outlay, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand for, uh, remodel. You guys are probably tired of hearing about that, but that work is in progress. Having, uh, uh, we're having a good time with that. It's, it's no, it's interesting because people, what's that, when they're on the phone, what's that noise in the background? Ah, I'll send you an email, show you some pictures. Thirty thousand, we've also budgeted for the police department's share of our emergency operations plan. We have eighty thousand budgeted, um, basically the first installment of a five-year plan for body-worn and dash-mounted cameras. Um, we're going to push that into next year, and I'll explain why here, um, as we get into that. But, well, actually, let me explain now. So, uh, start of the year, when we, um, brought Townsend on, we asked them to look for grants. There is a body-worn camera grant out there, a small rural tribal with the Department of Justice. But the problem is, you can't go buy your cameras without, and then be reimbursed by the grant. You have to wait for the grant, so that's what we're waiting for. And hopefully by middle of June, fingers crossed, we'll see some action by the Department of Justice, and hopefully we'll be successful with that grant. But either way, we're, we're moving on with our body-worn cameras. We've waited probably a little bit longer than we, than I would have liked. But again, looking for the, those federal dollars to assist with that, so, um, we're going to push that into next year. We have made some vehicle purchases. We bought two of them, and we're going to have a carryover into next year, as Alex has mentioned. Uh, we spent about a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars on safety equipment. We completed the outfit. It was kind of a three-phase, three-year phase program uh, with Motorola APX eight-thousand dual-band radios, so that we have interoperability. We're participating in a lot of mutual aid requests all around the state. These are excellent tools for us to, uh, be in contact wherever we go, or, or be easily programmed wherever we go, so that we have that interoperability. Um, we have looked at, uh, some investigative software, which we purchased, some personal management software, which, uh, we are going to purchase shortly. And we also found, uh, some citizen reporting software, uh, fairly inexpensively, so we're looking forward to that. Training. Okay, so here's the general training plan. I focused on peace officer skills and specialty training, individual assignment investigative training, uh, English and report-writing training, which I'm the only one excited about that, trust me. Technical and investigative conferences, some supervisory and leadership conferences, and new laws and regulation training. We've attended a lot of that. Bemoan the fact a number of times that Sacramento was generating legislation rapidly, and it is difficult even for our attorneys at, uh, LCW to keep up with that. Uh, but they are very good about providing us some training, so we're going to continue along with that. So here's some of the training that we actually participated in. Tactical breacher course, tactical building searches, which is, is coming before the end of this fiscal year. And those two courses were built specifically by a local provider at my request. Um, we've sent people to the tactical breacher course. All the officers love that, and I think they're going to have, uh, the same reaction on the building search, uh, course. Arrest and control instructor update, so that our people can provide our own training. Um, we sent one to Gracie Jiu-Jitsu Instructor Course, which is, is a very prestigious. All these martial arts people, jiu-jitsu people, they, you know, they roll, right? That's how they term it when they actually do some training, and, uh, one of them got to actually train with Hoist Gracie, the inventor of this martial art. So that was very nice for her. Digital evidence recovery, pistol optics instructor, armor corps, surveillance fundamentals, interviewing school-aged children, right? That's important. Homeless liaison officer, we have somebody in attendance on that. National Association of School Resource Officer Training. Continuing some leadership training in several different areas. Some supervisory leadership training, because again, I want to provide my supervisors with what we can, uh, as the, you know, the best in updated training. We sent our female staff to Central California Women's Conference held, uh, in Fresno, and, um, all of, uh, my female officers I put in touch with. Uh, Chief Janet Davis, who's retired from Clovis Police Department, and she does a really good job of women uh, in law enforcement at a course that she puts on over a period of a few weeks. The officers participate in that, and, you know, they have a good mentoring relationship with, uh, Chief Davis, and I'm very fortunate that she's, uh, providing that, and we're, we're able to take advantage of that. And then we also sent, uh, some female staff to women leaders in law enforcement, which is put on by California Police Chiefs Association. So personnel-wise, what did we add in this budget? It was one police officer, which we've hired, and one police lieutenant, uh, who was promoted and sitting right back behind me. Next year, um, I'm sorry, uh, so our personnel complement for Measure E-funded positions, one professional staff, ten sworn, two police lieutenants, one police sergeant, seven police officers. With that, we have thirty-one full-time employees, four professional staff, and twenty-seven sworn officers, um, including third-party funded, our, our ACT position, which is funded by the probation department and our Prop fifty-six grant-funded school resource officer. Next year, what's that look like? Uh, staying on the topic of personnel, uh, Measure E is going to continue to fund one police services technician, two police lieutenants, one police sergeant, and six police officers, not seven. So again, we had, uh, some increased costs for our employee costs, and projections were a little bit less than we had hoped. So, um, I do have a vacancy in a Measure E position. We're going to hold that vacancy, uh, till mid-year and then revisit that. So our total complement going forward will look like ten positions from Measure E, still the same, uh, until the police officer positions. It goes from seven to six with a, a reassessment mid-year. So general and third-party funds, uh, KPD staff will be four professional staff, twenty-six sworn. Now, we are looking at some school resource officer positions that I'll, I'll talk to you about here in just a few minutes. Our, our capital outlay, police station remodel, we're going to have to roll that into next fiscal year. Some of those, you know, they're, they're, it's still in progress. They're not going to be done until mid-July. Uh, body-worn cameras, as I mentioned, again, we're waiting for funding from the federal government. And we can't purchase the cameras, uh, because then they, they won't, they won't even consider your grant. They have to wait on that. The vehicle carryover, and then just, uh, the funding for- Uh, the vehicle carryover and then just, uh, the funding for, uh, equipping the police officers for their basic safety equipment. That's about twelve thousand dollars, which is what we budget, uh, the same for the, the general fund positions. Training plan, pretty much the same, peace officer specialty training, individual assignment, individual assignment and investigative training. My favorite, English and report writing, uh, technical and investigative conferences, supervisory, uh, conferences, women leadership development, and we're gonna, we have six employees scheduled to attend that this year and of course, new laws and regulations. Uh, Libra Cassidy and Whitmore, they have been very good about providing the training, but, you know, they're attorneys and they charge for their time, so, uh, it's not unreasonable. And Central San Lucky Valley Risk Management Association also provides excellent training. Most of that is actually free. Sometimes there is a cost to that, but it's, uh, excellent training. They're, they, and they've been on the front end of getting in front of a lot of this legislation, so helping us out quite a bit. Spending plan for, um, our school resource officers. Now, that, of course, I'll cover this, um, in the next presentation, but, uh, if that is approved going forward, uh, the schools will pick up the cost of the police officer, the fuels, um, data, phone, that kind of stuff, all the, that type of monthly type of maintenance, and, uh, we have budgeted for safety equipment, department tools. Um, communications is, I'm just giving you the light items, but communications and fuels are covered. Uh, we'll cover vehicle maintenance, training and education, and, um, one of these will kind of be a swap for the Prop fifty-six grant position that will no longer be funded, but will have the body and, uh, the other one, if approved, uh, same deal, but, uh, we will add in some hiring costs and, um, a dual-band radio. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
No question, but I have a comment, if I may.
Sure.
Um, again, great presentation. Thank you, Chief. Um, I really appreciate the school resource officer. Um, that was a great collaborative effort between you and, um, the school district. So, if that comes to fruition, thank you for doing that. Um, it's, Measure E is, um, interesting for me because I always like to see, like, when you implement a new tax that it's tangible and you're seeing the results of that tax. And I think both departments today have proven that that money is being spent, um, in a very positive way to impact the community in, in a positive way. And so, I see it. I see, I see the officers, um, you know, around town. It's not like you don't see them. They have a presence. Um, appreciate the training, uh, makes them, um, better at their job and, and in handling all the things that you guys, um, have to handle. And so, um, I just felt that, um, I wanted to say thank you and, and just, um, please keep doing the, the good things that both departments are doing and, and being good stewards of the tax-paying dollars that you guys get. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate, uh, your kind words.
I have a question about the capital outlay that you have for the body worn cameras. You have an eighty thousand dollar projection there. How far do you think that's? Like, when you, when you talk about that eighty thousand dollars and a lot of that with the grant and stuff, that's gonna give us the cameras, the dash-mounted cameras, correct? But in the long term, it's gonna be expensive, that's why.
Yes. Yes. So, when we started down this road a couple of years ago, that was a pretty good estimate. Um, of course, you know, you get a lot of pressure to sign a contract now, and we've been, we've been mulling this a little over a year and a half, again, looking for grants. I applied for one initially, didn't get it, and, uh, so, it, it may not be, if we get the grant, I think it'll be enough to equip every officer, uh, patrol officer, patrol sergeant, and, uh, probably our detectives and their vehicles. If we don't get the grant, we'll equip the patrol officers and patrol sergeants. We'll probably have some pass-around cameras for detectives when they're out in the field and probably not any dash cams, you know? Or if we do, it'll be limited in number, but, you know, again, it just depends on who you go with. Like, one company, if you buy one dash camera, you gotta buy them for every vehicle. Another company we're dealing with, they're more flexible. It's like, ah, it doesn't matter to us how, however many you want, so. Um, we're, we're hoping that the eighty grand covers everything, but if not, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out and we'll, we'll make the money work.
My concern isn't so much, even if we get the grant, that eighty thousand dollars is great and the whole spending plan is great. My only concern is that body worn camera and the dash-mounted cameras, those are gonna be continual ongoing costs beyond eighty thousand every year for the storage, the redactions and all that stuff. That's-
Correct.
That's what I was asking, if that's, any of that is factored into that eighty thousand dollars or if that's basically just an initial upfront equipment, getting them deployed, getting the server, getting that stuff?
Yes, that is, for the, for the, um, cameras and then the, um, storage. Uh, the redaction, I, you know, initially I wanted to add a, a police services technician to this year's budget specifically for that 'cause, you know, again, we don't know until we get there, but, you know, the, the money's not there for that, so we'll do what we can with what we have.
Thank you.
I have a question to follow up on that. I noticed the word subscription next to it.
For the body worn camera?
The cameras. So, can you explain what that is? Is it like somebody that monitors or?
No, that, um, that's just a, a word I threw in there. Basically, when you do these deals, most commonly it's over a five years. So, they give you a cost. Here's the cost. Let's break it down for you guys, five years, so it, it's a little easier to budget, you know, a little more palatable to swallow the, otherwise it's a-
Four hundred thousand?
Yeah, it'd be a big-
Five years? Does that mean like every five years or?
Yeah, and then, yeah, when that is up, we'd be looking at it again.
Any comments from staff or anybody in our chamber? Nope? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Good presentation. Thank you, Chief. That was information only, no, uh, no action deemed necessary. Next, we have six point three. School resource officer agreements for the Kingsburg High School Union School District and the Kingsburg Elementary Charter School District. Staff report by Police Chief Neil Dayton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so the city was a recipient of Prop fifty-six tobacco tax grant, um, for over the past four years. A grant provided a police officer for tobacco and vaping prevention, intervention, education in all the Kingsburg schools as well as education, compliance and enforcement in local retail establishments. A major benefit was the availability of a police officer to act as a school resource officer at all of our schools. The grant was not renewed and will terminate on June thirtieth. As such, no designated police officer was going to be assigned as an S R O to our local schools. So, the, uh, Kingsburg Elementary Charter School District and the Kingsburg Joint Union High School District, after enjoying the benefits of a police officer being present on our schools on a regular basis, both requested from the Kingsburg Police Department, um, to contract for a school resource officer. And the city desires to meet their needs, uh, both the districts, and we entered into negotiations with the superintendent. Uh, an agreement was reached with both the superintendents to have their respective districts fund the full cost of a police officer over time, incurred during performing those duties, fuel, data cost, uh, five percent administrative overhead, uh, um, for other city staff. Uh, the city would be responsible for the hiring costs, equipping and providing a vehicle for the police officer, uh, using existing fleet. So, there's a, kind of a breakdown of that on that, uh, graph. Uh, so the proposed agreement would include, um, general student resource officer duties, not focused on tobacco prevention. Like, it was in Prop fifty-six, the S R Os would be assigned to conduct classroom visits, give presentations, recreate with the students, other activities that relate to intervention, prevention, education, law enforcement. Both agreements contain essentially the same terms, except for the, some of the following. For the elementary school district, it's a five-year term and a three-year term for the high school district, uh, funding from the elementary school district, and the reason for a five-year term is that they're on a five-year grant. So, that, that made that kind of easy. The elementary school district, um, I also wanted a, I wanted them to appoint a, uh, person for a point of contract, point, I'm sorry, point of contact for the, uh, school resource officer, uh, because I wanted them to coordinate the officer's activities at various schools and as opposed to, you know, principal here asking and then a principal there asking for this, you know, same day and then, you know, I didn't want the officer making that decision. I want the district making that decision. I think that's where the proper decision-making should lie. Uh, and if there's any non-allocation of fir-, uh, funds for the agreement, um, then they do have a thirty-day out. Other than that, they're locked into a five-year contract. Uh, there's community involvement and training that the, um, elementary school district requested and it'll, the S R O will be teaching classes about citizenship, safety, community involvement. Other topics deemed appropriate for specific grade-level students, and that was requested by the elementary school district and I thought it was a great idea. Wish I'd thought of it myself. Other than that, um, they're pretty much standard contracts, uh, I'm sorry, they're, they're the same. And our recommendation is that council vote to approve. Now, I will let you know that, uh, the high school district on Monday voted to approve theirs and the elementary school district will take their vote on May thirtieth, May thirtieth, um, if that's possible, I, I think that will be possible. That concludes my report. Happy to answer your questions.
Question from council?
I have a question.
Um, thank you again. Um, how is the allocation of the school resource officer's time, um, allocated to each individual school? Is that a function that you do or is that a collaborative effort between the schools and you?
Um, so what I agreed to was that during, when, when school's in session, whatever the, you know, days are for school, that's their cop, and whatever they want the officer to do, that's fine with me. I mean, they have to keep us informed. I'll have a sergeant on that, so, you know, it'll be the things that we have already, you know, the prevention intervention, the interactions with the students, that kind of stuff. Uh, the elementary school did want to focus a little bit more on, on some civic lessons and stuff. I, again, thought that was a great idea. Same with them. When school's in session, that's their officer. Uh, those times when school's not in session, recognized breaks, holidays, you know, it's Christmas break, it's spring break, it's, uh, you know, summer, uh, then we'll have use of the police officer, uh, for the city. But they're paying the full cost and they're gonna get full use.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I have just a quick comment about it. I've gone through these contracts before in other places. This is a very good contract for the city. It's great for the school district too, but this is, this is a good, this is a good S R O contract for us. This is better than I've seen most of them, so, good job, Chief, on making that happen.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I just have a comment. You know, I, um, I appreciate what you've done too, Chief. And I'm, I'm also wanna thank the schools for, you know, realizing how important it is to have a resource officer at their schools. You know, um, especially in today's world where you never know what's gonna happen on school, so-
Indeed.
I'm really glad that, you know, they're willing to work with, with you and, and our police department and, and, you know, fund this since the grant ran out, so.
Well, and, and, you know, they, they, they've seen the benefit of it over the last four years. I have to give credit to Councilmember North for her day job writing that grant and, and getting that for us. So, you know, really, you set the groundwork for that and I appreciate that.
For all of your work.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, action deemed necessary. Um, recommendation is council approve agreements with both school districts.
Will I be made that motion second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay, we're, yeah, I know, right? Hope we get another grant or they'll fund it again, the school, okay. Moving on, council reports and staff communications, community service, we have not met since our last meeting. Seven point two, public safety. We met last Monday and, um, we are allocated ten thousand dollars each year for public safety and it was allocated to Althawal Park for the public safety community voted to help the funding for Althawal Park for their electricity, for the restrooms, that's a safety, you know, make sure lighting in the si-, in the restrooms are good and then also that electricity will help, uh, the cameras out, the cameras in this, at Althawal Park, so. And then we also talked a little bit about, um, fentanyl awareness and train-, uh, fentanyl awareness. I, I talked to, uh, Don Shoemaker at the high school and next year they do want, uh, to have some awareness by Fresno County, which is, uh, at least the submit camps office and Officer Cardinelli, go, you know, next year, early in the school year. So, that's all I have on that. Next, we have, uh, Chamber of Commerce, seven point three, Chamber of Commerce.
We met last week and most of the conversation was surrounded around, uh, Swedish festival. Um, Councilmember Smith brought this, so you have your schedule of events, um, starting tomorrow and going through, um, Saturday. So, we're excited about that. Um, they also had someone from the public, and I just wanted to share this. Uh, someone from T-Mobile came and they shared a couple different opportunities for our community. They offer something called a hometown grant and it ends at the end of this month. Like, it's every quarter you can apply, but it would be for some project that we would want in the city. And so, schools can apply, chamber can apply, like, anybody can apply for something for our community. Um, we, I have the contact information for the man that spoke and projects usually are around fifty thousand dollars to, that they'll fund. So, if you have any specific ideas, um, I can give you the contact information or how to apply. Um, the second thing that he shared is part of that, um, their outreach in communities also. Now that they're established over there is volunteer hours. Um, I can't remember that amount that they give each employee to do per year, but it was a significant amount and they, um, pay their employees to go, like, do volunteer and they also, for every hour that their employee volunteers, they cut a check to that nonprofit, um, after it's over, per hour. And so, I think the number was up to one hundred volunteers that the, um, chamber is getting for the Swedish festival for T-Mobile. And so, the suggestion was also to look into that for fireworks because they were, um, low on volunteers for fireworks. So, not only would they have the volunteers to help run, but they would also get a check, I think they said like thirty to sixty days later, um, towards the chamber, that could be some ongoing funding for that. So, that was something I didn't know. Um, I believe that was all to report.
Thank you. Seven point four, economic development.
Oh, sorry. Um, we did not meet, no.
Thank you. Seven point five, finance committee.
Nothing to report.
Seven point six, planning commission. We have not met since our last meeting. Seven point seven, South Kings G S A.
We have not met.
Seven point eight, downtown business improvement district.
They called an additional meeting yesterday, um, for, as a second one for this month, but there's nothing to report out.
Seven point nine, council governments.
Nothing to report.
Seven point ten, council member reports.
I had one item to report. Um, the Kingsburg Tri-County Healthcare District met last week, um, in which, uh, the K Y B L, the Kingsburg Youth Baseball League, um, brought in a, uh, drawing and had a presentation for an additional concession stand and restrooms. So, um, I thought that was, uh, um- So I thought that was a nice addition to the baseball park as they've kind of outgrown the one concession they've had. They're also having a, oh, a tournament this coming July. And so there'll be teams from basically out of state, even some traveling international to be at that, and that was because they've, they've done so well in years past and been so successful that they're hosting the tournament. And so I thought that was very positive. They also, the Tri-County Healthcare District also passed some new rules of decorum and civility. So they've added that to their bylaws, which, you know, you, well, yeah, it was, it was overwhelmingly approved, and so they've added that as well. Other than that, there's nothing to report.
Anybody else?
I have two things, I attended the opening of the Butterfly Gardens at the Fresno Chaffey Zoo, and that was one of the, at the neat exhibit, if you get the chance, you should see it, you know.
Yeah.
Next, Chief.
Right.
So I'm looking forward to that. The second item is, I am a member of the Swedish Festival Committee, and I'd like to extend my thanks to you guys in advance for participating in the event. I thought it was very interesting to be able to go through, as Alex had mentioned earlier, the report that the CPAC program, the Community Planning Assistance Team, put together, and I was on the council when, when they came, and it was neat, and it was kind of interesting to go through and see old items that we have accomplished. But given the Swedish, upcoming Swedish festival, one of the things they did do was a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And under that, the, a couple of the strengths identify exactly what we're doing this weekend, the community festivals, the authentic Scandinavian thing, Swedish heritage. But then along with that, one of the threats is our loss of identity. So I'm really enjoying all of, I'm just assuming, I know you're all active, gonna be actively participating, but I just want to extend a thank you to you, and extend a thank you for participating, being in our Swedish dress and just- just being engaged, it's gonna be a good time, so thank you.
Yeah, it's always fun, thanks, Stacy.
I had two things, our quarterly meeting at the Five Cities JPA was a week ago Monday. It's gonna be rescheduled, there weren't enough people, there wasn't a quorum. Second thing, did you have anything to report for that?
The executive committee also didn't have a quorum, so, but they did, they did give an update on the Center Point District website stuff, so they're still working on some of that, but, yeah, I think, you know, we were hoping, hoping to go back in person, maybe that will drive some accountability, so.
And the second thing is, if you haven't had the opportunity to go over to our police department and do a tour of all the construction, you're missing out on a lot of fun. Goodbye, Chief, way in the back. So it was interesting to have that tour and see everything that is planned and should be done July twelfth, is that the date? July twelfth, so, that's it.
I have a couple of things, last Friday, some of the council members were there also at the Pelicans, one-year anniversary and ribbon cutting for their business, it was very good. I recommend that people take their kids and grandkids over there, and if you get a snowball, make sure you get the one with the ice cream in the middle. Very good, very good. And then also I just wanted, yeah, it has to do with Kingsburg, I want to congratulate Jim Cranford and the KHS varsity baseball team, I think they only lost like four or five games this year. They were like league champions, like, two league losses and all, all the rest were wins, and they're actually playing right now, they're playing, Morro Bay had to come here for the playoffs, so they're playing as we speak, Morro Bay right now, so. If you get a chance, go by there and cheer them on after the meeting, I think they started at six-thirty. And that's all I have. Seven eleven, city managers' report.
Just a quick update on Governor Newsom's mayor revision, which he released last Friday. It's, he indicated the state's shortfall is about thirty-one and a half billion. But a lot of unknowns right now because one of the major issues is the IRS extended the tax filing until October, so they're not really sure with regards to revenue estimates at this, at this point. What I thought was noteworthy was about one-third of the legislatures, this will be their first budget, and then almost all of them, it'll be their, it's their first with a budget deficit, because the last time was two thousand nine, so there are not that many members remaining, so. Interesting, but more details to come. And then one other item I have is that the Business Journal this week released, we made the front cover for the Fiber Project. So it's just in paper copy right now, and the online version should come out next week. So exciting to see that, and both the City Hall and the Senior Center are currently connected to Fiber, so it's moving along. That's all I have.
Thank you, Alex. Next we have future agenda items, we have none, right, okay. Okay, moving on, we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Wasn't too bad.
I was wondering if you're dressed.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.